All right, we're gonna call the School District 200 regular meeting on November 28th, 2018 to session. Russ Roloff, our usual attendance taker is absent tonight, so Scott Gergen's gonna take a role for us.
All right. Joe Becker.
Here.
Peter Blissinbach.
Here.
Scott Gergen.
Here.
Lisa Hadeen. Here.
Dave Pimble.
Here.
Russ Roloff. Kelsey Waits.
Here.
Superintendent Collins.
Here.
All right, thank you. Could I get a motion and a second to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Could I get a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the October 24th, 2018 regular board meeting?
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Could I get a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the November 26th, 2018 special board meeting?
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. At this time, I'd like to read through a summary of that special session. A period of it was a closed session and we did come to a conclusion, and so I just wanna share out the results of that meeting, so that it's articulated out to the community all at one time relatively quickly. So, on November 26th, the Hastings School Board held a special board meeting to hear information and facts from the school district attorney pertaining to alleged misappropriation of school district funds by assistant high school principal and head wrestling coach Josh McClay. On October 8th, Superintendent Tim Collins was informed by a business office staff member that Mr. McClay had used the school district P-card, which is a purchasing card, to purchase 10 tickets to the Florida State Notre Dame football game scheduled for November 10th, 2018. The school district gathered some initial information, and then our district's attorney advised the district on the next steps of an investigative process, including which questions needed to be asked. The information as a result of this investigation showed that Mr. McClay had signed a document outlining that he understood what were appropriate expenditures for the P-card and what it could be used for, that since 2011, Mr. McClay had submitted in written documents that a group of individuals were going to wrestling clinics, when in fact, there were no wrestling clinics that were attended. Dollars from Fund 11 were approved by the athletic directors to pay for hotel, food, and travel costs because it was assumed that wrestling coaches were in fact, attending wrestling clinics. In 2011, Mr. McClay sent an email to the district office asking if he could use Fund 11 dollars to pay for football tickets to a Nebraska Cornhusker game. He was sent a reply that football tickets, because they were for entertainment, were not an appropriate expenditure. On several occasions after 2011, he purchased Division 1 football tickets for up to 10 individuals attending games on these trips. Fund 11 is where donated dollars are placed, so that the district can easily track their expenditures. The dollars in Fund 11 need to follow the exact same expenditure guidelines that are used for general fund dollars. Since 2007, the Wrestling Booster Club has donated $1,080 to Fund 11. Mr. McClay and his legal representative had forwarded an agreement for the school board to consider at this special meeting on November 26th. That agreement had four parts. Mr. McClay would resign as head wrestling coach at the end of the current wrestling season. Mr. McClay would resign as assistant principal at the end of this school year and be placed by the district in a teaching position for the 2019-2020 school year. Mr. McClay would repay the dollars spent since 2011 for the out-of-state trips and all associated costs. Mr. McClay would receive a 10-day suspension in the 2018-2019 school year without pay. The school members at this special meeting on November 26th listened to the advice of our legal counsel, who was present, and asked many questions during the closed session. The board members also took into consideration the fact that athletic director Trent Hanson and high school principal Mike Johnson had already recommended the termination of Josh McClay as the wrestling coach, as the head wrestling coach. At the end of the closed session, the meeting was reopened, and the school board voted, the school board members voted seven to zero to approve the agreement put forward by Mr. McClay and his legal representative. The school board wants to thank the employees who stepped forward when they recognized that there was a misappropriation. This has been a very difficult process that the district has been going through, and we want the public to know that the school board will follow the advice of our legal counsel, and at the same time, take action that we believe our residents have elected us to do. Thank you for allowing me to enter that into the record of the meeting tonight. We're gonna move on to item number four on our approved agenda, and that is, could I get a motion to, and a second, thank you, to approve the bills payable?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. With that, we'll move into the superintendent's report.
We start out with Mr. Nielsen. I don't know if you wanna join us or if you're coming up front, but their firm has been auditing us for several years now, and we appreciate the fact that they come to us early in the season. They get to us in July and June, and we really appreciate that because that gets timely information back to the school board. And I know I've told the story that when I first came here, now 16 years ago, we weren't quite ready for them to come here in June and July, and through the hard work of Kim Frye, Jen and our business office staff, we're ready when they're ready. And again, getting that financial information to you in a timely fashion is extremely important, as we're already looking into the 2019-2020 school year. So he's gonna take us back to the report, if technology is working.
I appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. As mentioned, my name is Aaron Nielsen. I'm a partner with Malloy Montague-Kornowski-Radosovich, and we go by MMKR. Before you tonight, we have three reports: the financial statement, the separate student activity, and then our management report that we use to summarize the results of our audit. For our presentation, I thought I would go through the PowerPoint, and if you wanted to see it a little more closely, these are slides I've taken from the management report document, so probably the middle-sized document of the three that you've received. But I'll march through this. I know you gotta length the agenda, but I think it'll look pretty smoothly if I'm working through the PowerPoint that I have for you this evening. We share with you our role to issue an opinion on your financial statements, to determine if they're materially misstated, are they fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles for the district audit, as well as the separate student activity audit. I also have the report on internal controls and compliance as required for the financial statement audit. You receive well in excess of the $750,000 threshold for the single audit or federal awards, and you receive some additional single audit requirement. The state auditors, state laws and regulations for the Minnesota Department, or that's for the office of the state auditor, and then MDE, Minnesota Department of Education, manual for activity fund accounting for the student activity funds. Get right down to it. For the results of our audit for this past year, so we have issued what is known as the terminology as an unmodified opinion on the financial statement. So this financial statement, your financial statement, the results of the year ended June 30th, 2018, fairly present the results of operations for the year then ended in the financial position as of that date. So the unmodified opinion's exactly what you're looking for, what we can issue as an opinion. Internal control and compliance reports, I've grouped them all because we did not have any findings to report to you as required, material weaknesses, so we do set thresholds, materiality, and we did not have any material weaknesses to share with you this evening, or instances of noncompliance to report to you with that audit testing. With regard to the student activity audits, so this is a separate audit and prepared on a different basis of accounting, so you'll see, we've issued what is known as qualified opinion, and I actually have qualified opinions on all my student activity audits. So it's the requirement, it's under a regulatory basis of accounting, as required by the Minnesota Department of Education, but that statement that you do have in there of the cash balances and the receipts and dispersments this year does fairly present the activity for your student activities this past year. With regard to that internal control and compliance, we just have one finding there, and again, it's a finding I have in all my student activity audits of the completeness of those cash balances for the separate student activity audit, of the receipts and dispersments for them, just due to the small materiality level of those and the various cash collection points with fundraising for each of the individual groups and the students capturing those, but nothing unusual noted with that. Getting into the financial results for your district, we've got a presentation here for the general fund, your primary operating fund, and I've got several slides for it because it is the primary operating fund, the largest individual operating fund for the district. We've got a 10-year history here, and note I wanted to share with you, included in the management report, is you can see, the past few years, when you look at the bars and size of the operation, the relationship of that cash investment balance and the unrestricted seems pretty steady each of the past recent years, but you can see that's changed when we look back to like 2012, where there were some changes, and some of you may recall with the metering of how the state was passing state aids to districts, because their budgetary situation at those times, they had changed that from a 90-10 payment schedule where we're currently at, almost to a point of 60-40 at that time, as well as some tax shift items that were adjusted through that time. But those were just cash flow issues and did not have an impact on the fund balance. But as you can see, that decrease in that unrestricted fund balance really is following your plan as you've approved through that budgetary process annually. When we look at raw numbers within the fund balance of the general fund, so that equity components of the general fund get split down between nonspendable, which is made up of inventory and prepaid expenditures that you have made before you're in, so you really can't use those for other purposes. You've already committed them for inventory purposes or whatever that prepaid expense was, so it's nonspendable again for another purpose. Restricted fund balance captures state restricted funds that you receive, such as long-term facilities, maintenance, operating capital, basic skills funding, and so on, that have a specific purpose that you can use those resources for. When you get onto the unrestricted, there's a little more flexibility for you with committed dollars, and you've got your own internally committed that the board has established. That's at a board level. The assigned is also at a board level, but you can delegate that authority, which you have that ability to do that. You really have only assigned in the past for when you've adopted a budget where you've deficit spent, so you can see where 2017, your assigned fund balance went from $1,858,0265 to zero, because when we were looking, closing out the 2018 year, and then we looked to the 2019 year, you've adopted a balanced budget for those unrestricted funds. So you did not have to assign saying, "We've already spent some of that equity that we have in place with our adopted budget," or approved, set those dollars aside. And then the unassigned is the catch-all for everything else remaining in the general fund, so you can see that change. And then we share with you a five-year history of that fund balance percentage each of the past five years, as unrestricted, which captures the components of committed, assigned, and unassigned separately of the unassigned fund balance. We share a table on your enrollment, primarily because it drives the basic formula allowance. You're funded on a per pupil that you, students that you serve, so you can see the importance of the number of students that are being served and the resources that you have driven by from the basic formula allowance, based on the pupil unit, so ADM or that average daily membership, and then resulting pupil units. So when we look at this past year, you can see that the ADM changed from 44.29 in 2017 down to 4,380 students, which is a decrease of about 49 ADM or 1.1% from the prior year. There was a 2% formula allowance increase, as you may recall that basic formula allowance. So when we look at your revenues on the slide we have here, overall, just to give you a size of the operation, your general fund operation is $52.8 million, rounding it off to the size of what your general fund operation is. Comparing that to where budget is, and you can see when we compare to the bars there, everything's coming in pretty close, because bottom line, you were about half of 1% within budget or just over budget, so favorable, liking to see the revenues come in better than expected, but within the half of 1%. Compared to prior year, you're about 1%, more than last year, nine tenths of 1% to be precise with the change from the prior year totals, which is capturing the 2% basic formula allowance increase, but offset by some of the decrease in enrollment. One other comment I have, I generally share is, obviously you can see that reliance on the general fund, where you're getting those resources for. So state sources are the primary funding source for your general fund operation, making up 73% this past year, and then followed by property taxes at 20%. So heavily reliant on decisions made at the legislature and what that funding will be, and waiting to see what will happen in the future. Looking at expenditures, we have a similar graph of the budget to actual to prior year presentation, and then in the financial statements, you may have noticed, we do it by program and then broken down here. We've summarized it by the object category, where are those resources spent, and like all the districts we audit, that concentration and right to the meaningful human resources of the finances in the general fund, educate the students of the district. Salaries and benefits making up 79% of general fund spending for 2018, overall coming in about eight tenths of 1% under budget, and about 1.4% over the prior year's approved contracts. Looking at total spending of the general fund, this operation had about $52.6 million, and ended the year about 2.5% under budget, so spending within the appropriations that you've allotted through the budget process and approved by the board. I have just one slide for a couple of the other operating funds, that food service fund, the community service fund, and largely due to just the difference in the volume of activity, the food service operation is about $2.4 million in annual spending. Their ending fund balance as a percent of that expenditures is about 19.5%. The federal guidelines look at like a three-month fund balance using a nine-month scale, so I kinda monitor that as, if you're getting to three, over 33%, they're gonna start being concerned with, are you building too much fund balance there? So you're within that range at that 19.5%. With the community service fund, you can see you've improved the financial position in recent years. You saw an increase this past year in the community service fund, which has $2.3 million of expenditures, ending the year with 36.2% of annual spending. You know, I know it's challenging being a conservative accountant and being concerned about building fund balance, but I have talked with your staff, and there are no caps in place currently for the community service fund, but at one point, you may recall, there was a cap put in place, and that was at 25%. So we discussed that. I'm not aware of any changes in legislation that's gonna adjust that, but we did discuss that, making sure, okay, are we operating in that, where that level wants to be? And there are reasons to build it up, if you're gonna have capital spending and use that for one-time expenditures, that will have a bearing on building it up, so then you're not down to zero when you have those capital outlays. And I have just a couple more slides.
Is there a formula for what you can spend on a capital outlay project out of that one time? I'm not trying to stump you, but...
Yeah, I think you did, though. I would have to look that up. So I'm not certain how far you can go with approved capital spending for community service. It would have to be for the programs, I'm sure. The internal service funds, that would capture your self-insurance activities for your self-insured dental and health insurance activities, so they're relatively new to the district, but we do have the past three years where you're seeing that change in the net position for the internal service funds, and showing that change in financial position and the operation. So you can see just the volume for dental and health premiums, claims is about $8 million operation for that at the end of 2018. And then my last slide is almost the most challenging to discuss, just because to this point, we've been talking about the individual funds, which is commonly how you're operating throughout the year with the budget process and the approval, the levy following your individual funds, and how you're managing the budget process and approving claims for the individual funds of the district. With the current reporting model, what I've been talking to to this point are those individual funds on that fund base statement, so it is a real short-term focus or in current financial resources, so it does not capture the long-term assets of the district, such as the buildings and the long-term obligations of the bonds payable outstanding. When we do that, the current reporting model, getting this district-wide, we've captured all of the individual funds and then rolled in also the long-term obligations and the long-term infrastructure, the capital assets for the district. So what we're showing you here is the top reconciliation, showing that change from that fund base discussion to what changes it to the net position on a entity-wide presentation. And then when we look at that equity or the net position on an entity-wide basis, how does that compare in the equity components from the prior year? So when we look, a couple of notes that I documented here to share with you, you can see when we look at the governmental fund line increasing about $49 million, that top line, when you look in the change column, $48,668. It's really capturing that you've issued your capital bonds this past year in the construction resources that hadn't been spent, so we're showing that, but in the fund base, we haven't shown it offset by any liabilities. Then we bring that on where you can see then it's offset with the bonds payable, capturing that, three lines down. And then we also have to incorporate the pension adjustments. So as we've talked the last couple of years with the changes in pension reporting, and last year with the OPEB accounting standards, you have to put your proportionate share of those pension obligations, the PERA and the TRA obligations, onto your financial statements. So this is really mostly out of your control. It's how those funds independently are performing at those pensions, they have separate audits, and then your proportionate share of them, and how that's changed this past year primarily is in the pensions, in the PERA and the TRA pensions primarily, of about $11.8 million. And you can see that falling down to that unrestricted component of net position. So I know that's a lot of information, if I can clarify anything here, or really what it's capturing is the full accrual, the entity-wide, the bonds, the pension obligations, but the real change came in that pension obligation rolling on another proportionate share of those obligations, and then having the change bottom line, net of then the improvements you saw in the individual funds we discussed. So with that, if there's any questions in any of the documents, or anything I can try to address, we have to do that.
No, I, again, appreciate the fact that your firm does put us on the top of your list, so keep doing it.
Will do.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up on your superintendent's report is Todd Field presentation, discussion. School board members, Russ isn't here tonight, but the facility committee has met at length. We also discussed at a work session, so we're pretty much familiar, but we just wanna, again, hear from the community presentation. We're also thankful, as a board, that community members get involved. And when we started this whole process two years ago now, two and a half years ago, there were some initial thoughts, and different eyes, different thoughts, different set of eyes bring us different aspects to the Todd Field initiative, which we're gonna bid here shortly. And so with that, I'll just turn it over. We're here to listen, and I know we might have a few questions, two that will come out of our work session or facility committee. So Scott?
Yeah. Sounds great. Should I assume we wanna be over here on mic, right?
That's good, yeah.
Testing on two, we're good? So I'm not gonna talk real long, 'cause I'm gonna turn it over to some of our committee members, but as Tim alluded to, we have been working with a committee since summer. We had some breaks in there, obviously, we haven't been nose to the grindstone, but we have been working on this project to get it to this point. We thought it was a good time to give a snapshot of kind of where things are at. We call this kind of the end of design development, then we go into contract documents where we really figure out what needs to be ready for the bid market. So it was a good time, we had a, you know, chance to look at budget and kinda align the committee's wishes with the budget, and I think we have a pretty comprehensive information for you. So you all have a packet in front of you, but I think we're gonna kick off with Dana and Rick are gonna come up and speak a little bit about the process, and maybe I'll come back up and walk through anything that they didn't touch on, and then we'll stand for questions as well, so.
Sounds good.
Come on up, Dana.
All right, well Trent gave me a job, and so I'm gonna talk a little bit about our group profile, and the commitment, and some of the guiding principles that are in your packets. First of all, the core planning group consisted of roughly 15 members, and those members, I think, did a good job of representing all of the stakeholders. Wald, architects and engineers provided much of the expertise. Jim Huberty was also on there, providing expertise in terms of design and functionality, but we had, a large part of the committee was also really representative of all stakeholders for Todd Field. We had parents, parents of youth, parents of current high school members, we had coaches from youth to high school. Virtually every sport that would come in contact with Todd Field was represented. Concessions, band, marching band, officials, media, public address, were all represented in the committee, and so that was a very diverse group that represented all of the different interests of those groups that will be affected by Todd Field. The group met, as Scott said, through the summer. I think we had five meetings, or two hours apiece, four to supper time, four to 6:00 PM roughly. And through the summer, where we had travel time and so forth, and so people certainly probably had other plans at times that they worked around, and at each meeting, the group was well represented. And we, one of the first things we did, with Scott taking the lead, was put together the guiding principles. That'll be the last thing that I speak to, and those guiding principles are in your packet, I won't read it, but that's the first thing we did, the first meeting, and when you take a look at those guiding principles, those formed all of our decisions, those were our guiding principles as we went through this entire process. And when you look at those principles, I appreciate the fact that they challenged us to consider aesthetics, but also functionality, challenged us to consider forward thinking and being progressive down at Todd Field, but also taking into account the history and tradition of Todd Field, and challenged us to try to meet the needs of all of the kids in the community, but also be very respectful of the community at large. And so as I said, those were our guiding principles and helped us in all of our discussions and in all of our decisions. And the last thing that I would say about the group itself is just how appreciative I was to be a part of it, and how much I respect the fact that everybody in the room understood that what we're trying to do and accomplish down there, I think, as a community at large, is to create a place that will serve the needs of many in the entire community. And so nobody in the committee ever pounded the table and said, "It's gotta be this way for my group." I think everybody approached it with respect for everybody within the group and understood that what was good for one group may not perfectly fit the other groups, and so it was a very collaborative group that I thought worked extremely well together. So that was my piece of it, and I think Rick is probably next.
Good evening, I'm Rick Hardy. I have been a resident of District 200 since 1996, and when the referendum was passed, I asked Trent that the opportunity presented itself, if I could be part, that I would gladly volunteer my time to be part of the Todd Field process. if I could be part, that I would gladly volunteer my time to be part of the Todd Field process. And my interest in being part of the process is I've been a high school football official for forty years. In the last twenty seasons or so, I've witnessed firsthand school districts and communities that have transitioned from a grass field to an artificial field. I've talked to administrators and other people about that transition, and it's nothing but positive. And I think that was, I just wanted to be part of that process here in Hastings if I could. One of the things that we talked about at our meetings was that we get one chance to do this right. And Coach Strain, you know, said that very clearly, that it was truly a collaborative effort, a lot of stakeholders. And I think what we're proposing here tonight is agreement of people that this is doing it right. Little sidetrack, John Malaya, who's a sports writer for the Minneapolis Star Tribune, called Todd Field, one of the two most iconic high school sports venues in the state of Minnesota. I think the other one might be up in Anoka. And so our goal was to preserve the iconic heritage of Todd Field while moving it forward for many more generations to enjoy and benefit from. And McNamara Stadium, you may or may not know this, may be the most seen high school sports venue in the state of Minnesota. Average daily traffic volume on Highway 61 is thirty-two thousand vehicles. You had Highway 55 to that, this is another fourteen thousand, five hundred vehicles. Information that came from MinDOT. But let's take a look at some of the pictures in our packet. The first image, let's skip to, let's skip to page twelve. The first picture on page twelve, it says the field overview, the front. This was the bulk of the group's discussion. We looked at everything, the core elements from the playing surface, the west end entry, renovated concessions and expanded restrooms, the ticketing area, the plaza areas that are in there, and the storage building. The scoreboard was not part of the discussion, and that's being addressed through private funding or donations. The ability for people to enter and exit safely was also a key and part of our conversation. So looking at that a little closer, the paved parking lot with the marked spaces should help with traffic flow in this area. The plaza areas on the inside and the outside provide a place where people can gather and hopefully on the outside not worry about cars. The inside plaza is another kind of gathering area, perhaps we could put tables in there, which might help some of the youth events that come and with lots of families and things. And so there's a place for people to actually sit down and they'll maybe have a bite to eat. The ticketing area allows for the people who are selling the tickets not to be out in the elements. I've been there a few times and they're holding umbrellas.
Really high-tech card table.
Trying to, you know, trying to keep the money from getting wet, trying to keep the tickets from getting wet. So the ticketing area is covered, and it also is handicap appliance compliant because we have some lower windows. And then we put an auxiliary ticketing area on the inside of the entrance, too, for maybe less populated events. The blue roofing ties well into the school colors. We look at the field overview. The field complies with the National Federation guidelines, not only for football, but for soccer and boys and girls across. The light and dark areas give that look of a field that's been mowed with a rotary mower. And the H with the Raider logo provides a strong visual brand identity, not only for the high school, but also for the community, much like the logo that's on the water tower by the high school. And as I mentioned earlier, the scoreboard was not part of that. Look at, skip to the next page, where it talks about the entrance and ticketing. The, as you notice from the design there, what we tried to do is tie in that, the stone look that you see around Todd Field, so that it kind of preserves that heritage of what has been there for many, many years. The gate to the right side of the main entrance is there for emergency vehicles and maintenance equipment to get in and out, so it complies for that. If you look at the, looking at the picture below that, is like as you're walking in the main entrance, it's kind of the view you're going to get, the dedication plaques, and there's talk of having pavers where we can, you know, people can donate and put something on a block or a tile and, you know, commemorate something. There are some other pictures of the plaza area, the toilets, the concession stand that you can kind of look through here for a second if you'd like. And then I guess I'll finish with, wanted to adjust the shed. I noticed that it wasn't part of the scope of this project, but I guess what I'd like to say is about, to consider that. You know, it's kind of like redoing your kitchen. You put in all new comforts, all new countertops, buy new appliances, do things to the walls, and you know, you're really proud of it, and somebody walks in and wonders why the linoleum is still twenty-five years old on the floor when you could maybe put in a hardwood floor or stone or tile flooring or something. So it's just something to consider. I think that that storage shed is something that if people come and see it and they say, why wasn't this done, we'll have an answer, and I'm sure it'll be a good answer, but it might be worth considering. This whole process has been quite an honor for me. I didn't know what to expect when I went in, and I learned a lot, and I have a great deal of respect for everybody who participated in this process and for our partners at WOLD for guiding us through this. I think people, when they see it, will say wow, in a really good way. It'll be a source of pride for our school district, be a source of pride for the community. Todd Field will continue to be an iconic sports venue, just dressed up a little bit, and it'll be a place for people to enjoy for many years to come. Thank you. Any questions?
I have just one question or comment, and that is with the parking lot. And I don't know the rules around this or anything else, but I know that we have handicap parking down below. I know that we've talked about handicap parking up above on what would be the north side of the stadium, because there is an accessible entrance at that level so that they can get to the bleachers and access all bleacher level. In the parking lot area, can we give some thought to maybe having some senior parking or something like that? So for our community members that don't have a state sticker to park in a designated spot, but maybe, you know, a couple block walk is a little too much for them. So just an idea to throw out there as we start thinking about this.
Scott, you have any comments? So Rick did a great job, right? And these guys did a great job. We have some more committee members. Raise your hands, committee members.
Thank you.
So we had, you know, we had, like you say, eleven or twelve or fourteen, depending on if you count Trent and Jim Huberty, but it was a great group, and you can see the results of our work. Part of it is managing the budget with the ideas so that we have more ideas than the budget holds. That's always the case. That's what a good committee does, right? They stretch, make sure they spend every nickel and look a little bit farther. So there's things like the shed and some other discussions that we've had with the facilities committee of the board, and they are thinking about how we might position to be able to purchase some of that or on bid day, if we have a favorable day, we can do more. Their thing is this goes into the next phase where we'll do another set of estimates, and that'll give us more real-time data as we, right before we go out to the market. And so we'll work with the facilities committee of the board to position this project to get as much bang for the buck. But other than, you know, unless we want to dive in any more detail, and we probably don't need to at this time, but there was a lot of thought about, you know, every aspect of how ticketing works, how concessions needs to work. So not only did we have the committee, but we had some user group meetings off to the side that kind of walked through detail and all that, so that that detail is incorporated in here as well. So, question?
Yeah, just one quick question. I'm looking towards the back and just for.
Page, page number?
Looking at the schedule.
Oh, sure. Great.
At the construction. So I think maybe for our viewers, just to kind of give an overview of the schedule, because I know that there is an impact to graduation for our existing senior class.
Right. And hopefully that's one of the few impacts, right? It takes more than a summer really to do this work. And so it is scheduled for this coming summer, but we're attempting to get as early a start as possible. That better assures us a chance at being ready in the fall. And Trent did his best to get some things scheduled as late as possible, but even with that, September third is the first big event scheduled for that facility. So the whole idea is to get things going and get things going as early in the spring as possible. So what that does mean, we're going to finish up the documents, go to bid in February. So we'll know numbers then. We can award a contract and get that contractor ready to deploy and get on that site. So the idea is to take over as early in the spring as possible. I don't know how many events, that means he's moved or not, but I'm sure it's displaced somebody, and graduation was the big discussion because that's so late in the year that that really puts a cramp on how to do things in the summer. So my understanding is graduation won't take place there, and you have that routine down as well, which is really going to help, we hope to be deep into construction at that point, making progress. So the good news is it's this summer and then it's done, and they'll be ready for everybody. Tim?
Our facility committee and even our boards went through work sessions. We had about two or three questions for the group. Are we at that point?
Absolutely. We'll turn it over to the groups here.
So one of the.
Some of the groups.
And I don't know who wants to answer it, and I'm just taking some of these questions off the top of my head, but one of the recommendations that came from your group was there's a common turf or a X turf, but then seventy thousand for this turf that some of the coaches said that was maybe a little bit better as they've gone to other sites. Can you just, do you recollect a discussion on that at all?
You may be able to speak to some of Jay's technicality, but I'm referencing one of our WOLD specialists, you know? The best I can describe in layman's terms is it comes down to the amount and the displacement of info that you put in the turf. It becomes deeper, thicker, and broader, which in theory makes it more neutral, longer lasting.
As I recall, one has a sand mix mixed with the crush rubber.
It makes it heavier, so it doesn't move as much, doesn't displace as much, creates a thicker pad underfoot, if that makes sense.
Our committee didn't know, as we discussed it, if it was that there was a better traction or if there was less abrasiveness when you fell, whether it be lacrosse or football.
So it's not so much in the, in the grass fibers as it is the fill?
That's right. That's right.
Fibers itself, all the fill, of course.
Right. And it's a play characteristic more than a longevity of the product or any of that.
Is there any safety aspect to it?
Probably there's some differences. I can't speak to that level of detail.
Another one of the questions.
And we have time to decide that, by the way. We've got, until we go out to bid to figure that out.
Another one of the potential discussion points that your group gave to our group was that we talked about the handicapped, there's one handicap entrance up above, it's on the far north.
Northeast corner.
Northeast corner. And your group had asked for us to consider as a school board, maybe adding one on the other corner. And we were just wondering what some of the thought that went into that. Because our initial reaction as a board was, okay, yeah, you know, more access for handicapped accessible, but then when we looked at it and felt that from the northeast corner, once you get on the ramp, you can access the whole stadium. So I don't know if you had any more details or thoughts for us on that?
Yeah, it wasn't viewed as a, you know, a need per se, as you just described it, since we already have another ramp kind of access. It's really, I think, more about really trying to shift the traffic and the crowd control from nine points to two points, you know, kind of going from northeast, west, and south. You can get into that stadium about eight different ways. When you think of our highest profile events like a football game. But currently, that's the only time someone can get onto that ramp is at those football games. It's not open for any of our other events. We only go through that main gate. So we're just trying to look at some of the potential limitations, although this design would greatly enhance someone with a disability, their ability to get in and out and have a good viewable spot, you know, just much better underfoot, you know, plaza and everything else. So it was just a consideration, and we're really trying to limit the amount of access that we have for our largest events. We've considered not even taking tickets, because I don't think that's at that corner. And so if we shut that down, then we also could have to shut that gate down. So again, definitely not a need, but a consideration that we talked through, do we want to make sure we have another option for people to get to the bleachers? Still have the dynamics of trying to navigate someone parking on 10th Street and getting into the venue and some of those type of things. Those become a key or a very management issue.
Another one was that for us to consider, and it was the blue metal roof, which is a more, number one, it's a metal roof. Number two, it's more the Hastings colors, and it would probably stand out more than the asphalt. And Scott's going to get us some more detailed numbers on asphalt versus metal. Was your group looking at that more from aesthetic viewpoint that, and I know Rick, where's Rick? Oh, there he is. Yeah, I didn't realize that many numbers, you know, the thirty-two thousand. Was it that it will be so, the view, it would just make it stand out that much, or did your group spend a lot of time on that or not?
Well, yeah, I think, you know, we looked at it, and that was when some of the initial renderings were just a black roof, and then when we saw the blue, it did, it just created so much more of that identity with the district, with the community, and so that was part of the reason why we decided that, you know, let's leave these in the proposed drawings.
And then I think for our group, and Rick, you touched on it, is the storage shed. Do you upgrade your entire house and then not do the garage doors? Or, I mean, you talked about.
Do the kitchen and not do the field.
Right. And so I think one of the difficult things for us as a board was the price point that we saw that potentially coming. We don't disagree with that. And again, I think what really helped us as a board was when we started planning this with Scott, again, a long time ago, these were things that we, as a board, didn't really even think of. We were thinking more of the parking lot, the field, the access. We definitely wanted, you know, for Trent to be able to be mobile and open up the doors to let people in. We talked about those things, and we didn't think about some of the things that you brought to our attention, so we really appreciate that. Another set of eyes and brain power just has helped with it, so.
Can I ask just a quick question about the storage shed? Because the, and I too appreciate the interest in considering upgrading it. Was there an identified need for the additional space?
Yeah, there's not really storage down there, per se.
What's in that building right now?
Right now, you have all the scaffolding or the decking for the graduation, the stage.
The platform, yeah.
Which is a lot of stuff that goes in there.
I know once you put in a building, it takes a lot of space.
Yeah, well, you fill it no matter what, how it is. And then you have also.
I thought that was just me that.
No, that's a universal truth.
They have equipment that's used on the field is stored in there. Also, you know, stuff for marking the field and for maintaining the grass and those sorts of things that are in it. But there's nothing for the teams really to have to put their stuff in that's secure. And by, Trent and I took a good long look at it, and like. And by, and by, Trent and I took a good long look at it and like Jim said, you know, you've done all this every mile, then you got this thing that's sitting in this old pole barn is actually what it is. And if we reorientate it and make it a little bigger and have it fit in and where you can enter it either outside the field or inside, you're going to have to have storage for your staging anyway now, still. And you're going to have to have, what's the machine called, a groomer?
Right.
There's, there's a groomer for the turf field that has to be part of the thing, that has to be stored someplace, which takes the place of what mechanical stuff is in there now. So it's, and then it gives us a space where, and a joining it where the teams can put in equipment, whether it's for the football games or for the soccer games or for lacrosse and even community. Because remember, Trent, what, what did you say? We're going to go from how many?
Forty-some to-
Users?
Forty-some to a hundred and twenty-some.
Or events or something?
Or events, yeah.
You know, just on days, roughly three times, just in theory as many days. Yeah. And so, and having something there for that and, and then it'll be retrofitted, of course, for all electronic entrance, you know, like either card entrance or keypad. So everybody, you know, can do that. So you're, you're going to have to have those sorts of things anyway. So we take a look and try to make it as pleasant so when you come down to the field, you see the total thing looks tied together and, you know.
Yeah, and again, thanks, thanks that that was helpful. Because I, I appreciate that you'd kind of like it to look like it more or less happened at the same time.
Yeah.
But I just wanted to understand what the additional space part of it was and I, I hear, what I hear you saying is opportunities for community participants that use the facility as well as school participants that use the facility to store team gear, whatever that word means.
One of the aspects I, I, when I drove down there and took a look at it is that there, it's built up.
It's up.
Right.
Is that due to the water drainage issues? Are we going, because in the new one, it doesn't look like it's built-
We're going to take that out from there.
Yeah, I'm thinking, I'm getting on Jay a little bit.
We were going to try to lower it. If, if, if we replaced it, the idea was to lower it, so it's more connected with the facility.
And we're not going, and the water problems are going to be?
Well, you, that's a good point. It probably was built up because it naturally ponds there and absolutely, as part of the requirement to put the paving in, you don't just pave, we have to deal with the stormwater now. Has to be a legitimate parking lot and a legitimate stormwater management system. So there'll be underground chambers, well, we don't know exactly the solution yet.
Yeah, that's a solution.
That's a solution or a small pond or those kind of things. So that, we're still working through those details with the city and MINDOT and, but it will not be designed to flood. It'll be designed to drain. And it, and it does flood now, there's a big portion of that line you can't use.
Well, of the parking, right, yeah, 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 yeah.
Which is probably why whoever built the shed, whenever year they built that shed, put her up high and dry, so to speak, right?
Yeah.
So we did have a lot of discussion about, wouldn't it be nice to do that? And we've talked about that with facilities committee, the board, sounds like, and we've talked about it in the board in a one session.
Yeah.
And there are a lot of choices from starting over to, you know, dressing up what's there or dressing up what's there and adding on to what's there. And I think we can explore that in the coming months together and see if there's an opportunity to do something same time.
Okay, any other questions from the board members? Seeing you're standing here, when would be the next time that you would like to meet with our facility committee? Are you planning right after the holidays?
Yeah, I think whenever you guys want to get together, we can kick some of the stuff around again. We've got some more things we've studied based on questions you've had in the past, so.
Okay.
We're ready anytime.
All right, well, shoot me an email if you prefer, before the holidays or after.
No, I think-
Okay, okay.
We'll convene right after sometime.
Well, thank you, everyone. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, I, as a board representative of the board, I want to thank everybody that participated in that committee. It's a, it's exciting and, and fun and probably a little bit stressful thinking, this is the one shot at it. And, and the more like involved, well-articulated positions we have, the better the outcome will be. So thank you for your time.
And if you guys want to stay here for the rest of this exciting board meeting, feel free, otherwise, uh-
I see a great discussion about polling locations coming up next. You might want to hang in there for that one at least.
Could you send us the slides? Your address, Deanna?
Yeah. Okay. I sent it to them, I couldn't open it, the text saying it was unstable.
You sent it to?
I sent it to Mike.
Oh. Will you be able, will you be able to splice those in as, as they're talking about it?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Polling places for two thousand nineteen, I'm going to let Deanna-
Woo-hoo! It's really exciting. I'll make it as painless as possible. The state law changed last year, this is super hard to read. State law changed last year that we have to now use a polling location that is already in place by the city. So we can't use Tilden anymore. We used Tilden, a few years ago, we started using Tilden because we collapsed all of our precincts from ten to five. And Tilden was a great spot for us because we could put all the townships in one location and they could vote there. It was great for us. I don't know if it was great or not or not. Anyway, the state law changed last year and it really didn't affect us last year, but by the end of each calendar year, we have to declare where our polling locations are going to be for the coming year. Last year, we just declared Calvary because the, the city had an election anyway, so it really didn't matter. If we would have had to have an election, it would have been on their ballot. But twenty seventeen, twenty nineteen is our election solely, so we need to decide where we want to place that polling location. And there's a couple of options. So this is a, the city of Hastings where we are currently have polling locations. The black ones are where we actually, as a school district, have a combined location. So we have Hope Lutheran Church, which houses our Ward One, both precincts. We have St. Phillips, which is all of Ward Four for a school district election. Our Saviors is for all of Ward Two and miniature township. And then Ward Three is at the Methodist Church and that's all of Ward Three. What we need to do is find a place that's already occupied by the city for all of our other people. So I have a couple of thoughts.
That's me.
Yeah, let's hear it.
Okay.
We could do one precinct for everyone outside the city of Hastings and we could put it at Calvary, which is down here on the corner of Fifteenth and Pine. St. John's Lutheran Church, which is on Eighth Street just off of sixty-one. Or the Crossroads Church next to Coburn's. Those are three locations that the city is already using. The Crossroads, one is kind of attractive because it's close for people that are living out on Ravenna, Meesville, those voters, not necessarily so great for the people in Denmark Township. And I don't know how the people in Hampton necessarily would feel about it. So then the second option would be a precinct for everyone outside the city of Hastings, with the exception of Denmark. We could put Denmark, either put them in with our Saviors, because we already have miniature township in with our Saviors and Ward Two, which is, you know, right by the tennis court, if you're not real familiar.
Yeah, yeah.
Or we could possibly move Denmark to City Hall, because City Hall is a polling location and that would be really close for people to just come across the bridge, go to City Hall, go back across the bridge. And then we could put everyone else into one of those other three locations. It would be hard to put, like move all of those out of city precincts in, you couldn't put them at City Hall, that it's a really small polling location. It would work fine for something like Denmark. It would not work for five thousand voters. And that's what we have in all of the townships, five thousand voters. It just, it wouldn't be a possibility. So we'd have to split it up. The third option is we could combine all of those townships into the existing four city precincts that we currently use. So we could kind of say, okay, Hope Lutheran Church is kind of in the neighborhood of Ravenna, Meesville. We'd put them in there. We put Marshawn, Vermillion, Vermillion Township, New Trier at the Methodist Church, because that's kind of close to them. Hampton, you could throw into St. Phillips. You know, that would be another option. You'd go down to four precincts, but they'd be four big ones. And you don't have to make a decision on it tonight, I just wanted you to know about it, because if you have questions or whatever, we do have to do it at the next board meeting and we only have a couple of weeks to figure it out.
So if you go to, then, an additional loca, essentially an additional location at City Hall, so then it's additional staffing.
Right.
Although you've eliminated, we have to eliminate Tilden. Tilden goes away.
We can't use Tilden. We can't use anything that the city's not used to.
So Tilden-
Right, and I appreciate that, but we used to have five, so we would have had five locations.
Yeah.
Tilden has to go away.
Tilden has to go away.
Because of state law. So the question is, one of the questions is, would we want to stay at five? And if we did, you know, pull that out separately?
If we want to stay at five, then option one is your option. And we just need to decide, like, part of me says St. John's is a, is an easy compromise because it's close to sixty-one, so the Denmark people come across the bridge, they go up to Eighth Street, they take a right, they're there.
They're there, yeah.
Crossroads is attractive because it's got a lot of ample parking. And I've heard that that was a really good group of people to work with, like that, that church was real-
It is.
Accommodating.
Very accommodating and it was a great space for a large group of people. Calvary is like my least favorite because it's really close to the Methodist Church, so it causes confusion.
Yeah.
And it's a really small location, because I've worked as a judge there and it's not a great, it's a very small church. And this is a great number of people. I mean, there's, they have quite a few voters that are, even, even though like not a ton of people from Hampton come in, once you do attend, you know, townships all in one location, it's busy.
It ends up to be a lot of people.
I'd say for sure in Calvary, because I'm high election judge there and that isn't like-
It's, it's not, it's a bad space. So I, I would agree, that one to me is only up there because it's, it's an option, but it's not a great option.
City Hall, I'm concerned about the parking for that, too.
See, and that's why City Hall only works if you're going to use it for just Denmark.
Denmark only.
Because it's way too small to do anything else.
Which is about, how many voters by, that, thirty thousand, thirty-three hundred? Maybe not that many.
Denmark, well, see now, everything, everybody's can, total farming.
All consolidated in there.
But it's about thirteen hundred registered voters.
Thirteen hundred, yeah, okay. I was super far off, I guess, sorry.
Does St. John's have steps going up to it?
No.
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 So that would be street level?
It's street level.
It's street level, but parking there is kind of restricted.
That's neighborhood parking, just some angled parking.
There's some angled parking in the front. And then, but it, it's a, it's better than Calvary.
Yeah.
I mean, of those three choices, Crossroads is by, enlarged, the, the best one, because they have a lot of parking and it's a great, it's a big space.
And if the weather's bad, they've got that front access there that people can line up in.
Yeah, I'll say my Denmark Township piece, which is we perceive Coburn's to be really far away.
And I agree.
Um, there's a lot of stoplights, there's a lot of stoplights between Denmark Township and Coburn's.
No, I mean, you're adding another-
And it is, probably ten minutes. I'm not making that up. It's, it's five to ten minutes, depending on how the lights go.
And, and that's-
And it's generally the wrong direction. I mean, the people that are parents and have students or maybe students that are right at voting age or are coming into town, but they're coming into the high school, they're coming into the middle school, they're coming into that area. So that, that makes St. John's appealing.
A, a fourth option that I did put up here, because I don't know how really viable it is, is that we go back to Denmark Township for Denmark. The, the bad thing about Denmark Township is, and this was why they wanted to move in town-
Yeah, I know, I remember this.
Washington County bought different voting equipment than Dakota County bought. And so their judges aren't going to be trained on the Dakota County equipment. So that means you have to take judges that aren't Washington, or Washington has to be trained on Dakota. And that was kind of a conundrum.
Can I just ask a couple of questions? So you said Denmark Township had wanted to move back into town for voting. How did that work for the other townships? I'm just thinking about-
We consolidated every, we, we-
We pulled everyone into town two cycles ago.
And except Denmark Township.
Because we were doing ten-
Ten locations.
We were doing ten locations. So we had polling locations in Hampton, in Ravenna, in Marshawn, every far reaches of the world.
Well, that just seems like, I mean-
And then we left Denmark out. And then they asked to be in.
Yeah, and then we left Denmark out and they wanted to be in.
It's just a really far drive to have them all coming into the city that people who live in the city are not experiencing. And so when you changed that, was there a difference in voter turnout?
Not really.
I mean, did it affect?
No.
Not really, because we don't get great voter turnout, like for instance-
On a school only.
On a school district only election, we don't get great voter turnout out in Hampton. So we were, we were basically staffing, because you have to have four judges. So we were staffing at Hampton for ninety people to show up at the polls for an eight, you know, like from seven AM until eight o'clock at night. And those people didn't love it because the judges, it's hard, first of all, to staff it. Secondly, those judges have to bring all that stuff in at the end of the night, like they can't, the, the voting equipment has to be returned that night legally. So they can't, they have to make that trip in. So I didn't, those people, I didn't really hear a, a great outcry that they had to come in town.
But it seems like voter turnout stayed consistent even with moving it into town.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I can't, it, so many factors go into voter turnout. Like if there's a question, voter turnout is always higher than when there's not a question.
Yeah, it was a referendum year.
One, the first year that we did this, there was nothing on the ballot except for school board. So you always see a dramatic drop off. So I don't think you can attribute that to it being moved in town. I think you can attribute it to not being invested in, I'm sorry, you guys getting what that is.
So we will decide this at our December board meeting. I'll probably have a recommendation at that time, so that you can then either say yes or, or no to it.
Did you have the information?
Yeah.
Let it, let it stew for a little while here.
Well, and the, and again, this is, since we're having this valuable discussion at a board meeting, as people are listening to this, if, you know, share your opinions.
I think also the-
If you feel like the coming in, especially probably on the Denmark side, it was difficult or fine, you know, be interested in hearing about that.
I think it also helps to have the discussion here, because then people understand why, we don't want to change, but we have to change by law.
I mean, it was great having it Tilden. For one thing, we owned that property, so it was super easy to set up and to get tear down at the end of the night. And it was a good space for, I told the city, they should do Tilden, because it's a great space for it. They have the gym there.
There we go.
It didn't work, she wasn't, it wasn't compelling.
They didn't do it.
That is a good idea.
You know, we have the parking, we have-
Great parking. It has easy access, handicap doors.
Yeah. Coffee in the senior center.
They do have a new person as their electric clerk, so, but that doesn't really help us.
For this, for this cycle, twenty nineteen, we still have to solve something. Okay. Okay. So, we can anticipate seeing this in the December meeting agenda. And we have a work session in a couple of weeks, so if people have some insights they want to share, the next discussion will be at that time.
I don't know if we have a work session before our December board meeting.
Oh, that's right, December's the early board meeting.
December's one and done.
So, it's quick, it's a one and done.
December twelfth.
All right, all right, all right. Sorry about that, that was confusing on my part. Did you have any additional items?
Nope.
Okay. With that, we will move into the action items for tonight. Our first action item is a motion to accept the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen audit report that was presented to us earlier in the evening. Could I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Our second action item tonight. All right, I'm looking at two different things. I'm gonna stand the printed one. Is a motion to set the actuarially, actuarially.
Actuarial.
Good, I thought I had it. The actuarial, I can't look at it and say. The actuarial determined contribution for the para irrevocable trust, Fund Forty-nine, per the liability study of twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, to three different levels that are included in the agenda, if anybody wants to look them up in detail.
And I did share with the, the board, I think I did in an email, I don't really remember anymore, but this is where we have an outside firm do a study of what we owe for health insurance for years to come. And so, we have to take this money out of our, our general fund to make sure that we have the money to pay for that liability. And they've set that amount at one million seventy thousand and some change.
Could I get a motion in a second?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Our next action item is to set the actuarial. Is that right?
You got it.
The actuarial determined contribution for the pension ASL funds, per the liability study for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. There are two, the exact numbers are set in the agenda, if, for anybody that wants to look it up. It's just under a quarter of a million dollars.
And I shared in that email communication that this is for our old severance that we have still in some of our contracts. And all of that, all of those severance agreements and contracts have been sunsetted. So, I'm, I don't know the exact year, but this will phase itself out over time. Kim, how often do we, by law, have to do that study?
Every two years.
Every two years, okay.
All right, could I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Our next action item is a motion to approve the reading of, one, two, three, four, five, six, eight policies. But can I get a motion in a second? We can have a little discussion.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion?
We brought this forward last time, it was some very minor word changes from MSBA and all of them. It did not change the intent of the policies at all.
Right, and there wasn't a particular issue that raised this? There was a review of the policies and just the compliance?
This was actually the compliance review.
Oh, the compliance review? Oh, okay.
So, was it, there was a compliance review for civil rights that identified.
But they were very minor.
Minor changes in these policies.
That's right. It was still.
Mostly adding a lot of names and addresses.
Yeah, as opposed to position descriptions. To make the, identify who to grieve, who to grieve to in more detail.
Yes.
But create more upkeep.
Yes.
Yes, that is absolutely true. That is absolutely true. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Our next action item is a motion to approve reducing the amount of the student activity fee family maximum to six hundred per family per year, effective July first, twenty eighteen. Could I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
I just want to share with board members, we, we had gone through two work sessions discussing this. Trent came in and shared how many families were even reaching the nine hundred or the nine hundred and fifty. And at that work session, we did a lot of head nodding and said, yeah, that makes sense. And then I should've brought it back to you as a board at that time to officially approve it and I, I forgot. At the high school, they still, they followed it, but now I'm actually just bringing it back to you as a board to, to approve it, even though we had lengthy discussion in our, in our board work sessions on it.
Yeah, previously, the, the family max had been nine hundred. And the activity fee per activity is currently a hundred and fifty dollars per student. So, a family can reach this with a couple of kids and a couple of activities.
Yeah.
Is there any further discussion? Thank you.
Happy to see it.
Too little, too late for Mr. Bliss to buy, too little, too late.
It's not right to relax.
That was my next question.
That's gonna be his amendment to the motion.
It's okay, someone's got a kindergartner, so.
He'll get back to it later.
It's coming. All right, no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Our next action item is a motion to approve discontinuing with class fees for high school IT, art, and horticulture classes in the year twenty nineteen, twenty. Could I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Do we have some discussion, please?
Yeah, again, I think we discussed this at two different work sessions. One, Mike Johnson came in and presented. And so, again, whenever it gets to the board level, I know that the viewing audience doesn't see a lot of discussion from us as board members because we spend a lot of time before we get here so that the viewing audience doesn't have to sit through two hours of discussion. If I could recap some of that discussion, and I didn't bring all the facts and figures with me because I figured you as a board, you knew quite a, a bit of that, but there is a law that I'd say we're living in a, in a gray area for the, the public that's viewing this. You know, in, in John D. Wall's horticulture class, we say that, well, the student can bring home that display that they make to mom, grandma, dad, or brother. So, then shouldn't that student have to be paying a fee to create that? And we've talked about, well, some students might not want to bring it home. That they don't feel it's good enough to bring home or whatever. And we talked about the back and forth about the intent of the statute of, well, is that a core requirement of the class or not? And are we kind of stretching it? So, we had a lot of those, those discussions. We had a lot of discussions that, and information from Mike on, we don't know how many students who don't take the class because they're not gonna come forward. They're not gonna come up, even though we would waive it, they're proud, so they're not going to ask that. Or they won't even approach a counselor because they don't want it waived. They've got that, that pride. Then as a board, we also had discussion on that we can't wipe out every fee in our schools either. That, that's a difficult part for us too, that we know some people don't do sports because of fees. We know some people don't do show choir because of fees and. And so, for me, I know that we didn't, in the work session, ever come to a conclusion on this as a board and that's fine. We all don't have to come to the, the same page. I don't think there'd be anything that I'd probably be able to bring back to you as data a year from now, or two years from now, or three years from now, I don't think, that said, well, we had five more kids take art class or horticulture because this was removed. Maybe I will, maybe the numbers will grow. I, I don't know, but I, I don't think that this is something I'd be able to come back to you. For me, as superintendent, and listening to all the discussion and, and thinking about it, I look at some of the other things that we talked about as extracurricular activities. So, that's a choice that students and families make if they want to be in that extracurricular activity. And even though these are electives, they're, they're not core requirements, I still consider these as some of our core offerings. And so, I kept landing back on that. And that's why I'm bringing the recommendation forward. And I know this might not be unanimous and that's, that's fine. But for me, I kept coming back to, these are still some of our core classes at the high school. And I know the, the rough numbers, I think it's around twenty thousand dollars, Mike said, in, in fees for these three. I think right now, we're at a point where we do have a fund balance. So, I think it's easier to try this at a point when, as a board, you have a fund balance and when you're headed to the red. And so, that's why I'm bringing it forth as a recommendation to you as a board and you can have further discussion on it as, as well as you, as you vote on it. But my recommendation is, I don't want to call it a pilot, but I'd, I'd say let's remove the fee for a while and, and see where we are with it two or three years from now. But go ahead, I, I don't know what else.
So, I think Mrs. Kieport also has a fee in her class and I'm assuming it's the same type of class we're listing here? For the cat cadaver?
And I never followed up on that yet.
Well, it was busy.
Yeah. Thank you.
And maybe we could double back at that at, at some point.
At our December meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, because maybe we could still catch it up in the.
I do have that in my notebook yet, by the way.
Yeah, now that you say it, I remember.
So, I don't know what board members, if they just want to vote on it or there's more discussion. I, I know we spent a lot of time talking about this and going through the, the pros and the cons and.
I think you had a good summation and I agree that I think it's going to be tough within any margin of error to know, did this have a big, I mean, unless all of a sudden we have a forty percent uptick in, in people taking these classes, which I don't expect. But I think it's a, I think it's a good thing to try.
Agreed.
Yeah, I feel like it, it clarifies our standing with regard to the state statute. What's, what's a part of, a core part of the class and what, what would not be. I feel comfortable with that.
I'm all for reducing fees.
I'm sensing a trend.
Yeah, we're going in the right direction, let's keep it up.
Anything else? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
I do want to add one other comment too, and we heard this from Mike Johnson as well. The instructors in all three of these areas, they benefit greatly from the community and the businesses and former graduates who donate very generously to the horticulture and to the IT department and the woods and the metals.
And, and not to mention the staff themselves going out and scouring Craigslist to find bulk wood. To be at the Hastings Recycling Day to pick up, to pick up.
Small engines that can be re-made.
Yeah, small engines that aren't working and things such as that.
But I wanted, I wanted to mention that too for our staff who, they're getting a lot of resource. And thank the community. We heard from several businesses that year after year donate very generously to these programs. And it was fun to hear that some of them are former graduates that now own these businesses as well, so thank you.
Don't we have a cabinet shop in town that helps us with our, with our equipment as well?
Yes.
Yeah. All right, our next action item is a motion to approve a relatively short list of leaves. Could I get a motion in a second?
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Our next action item is a motion to improve the employment of three new individuals. Well, they're new people, three individuals. Could I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Our final action item for tonight is a motion to approve the resignation of Jackie Schindler, a teacher at McCullough Elementary, effective one, two, twenty nineteen. Could I get a motion in a second?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Under other business, we have a review of the twenty nineteen board calendar, which was included in the Dropbox. Deanna, are you gonna lead a discussion on that or am I?
Just if you have anything that won't work, that, because we'll need to approve that at the organizational meeting. So, just look it over and if there's any real glaring problems.
I want to make sure, I think it's the May work session happens at the high school because that's empty balls night and I like being able to walk from one to the other. But other than that, I didn't, nothing jumped out at me. I think it's May.
Good suggestion.
I'm just impressed that you know the one May.
I know, I'm looking at that.
I'm spending a hard time knowing what happens the rest of this week.
I feel it's easier. It's the April meeting, it's the April meeting.
I couldn't think about May.
It is the April meeting.
We caught her, it's the April meeting.
Life is less stressful if I just imagine myself a year forward. Oh, well, I'll be easy then. So, it's good. Yeah, so if anything else pops out at people as you, like, maybe look into next year a little bit, people, you can point that out to Deanna and we'll prove that. Prove that the next session. Our next meeting, as, as people so accurately pointed out, will be a board session. And it will be the twelfth of December here at six o'clock. That is a truth and taxation meeting, which means there will be an opportunity for the public to speak regarding the taxation element of the district. All are welcome. Are we aware of anything else? Is there a lunch, like a student lunch in December?
No.
For that group that's.
There is, I'll be emailing you as board members, but I'm gonna volunteer to serve some hot dogs at Hastings Family Service on twelve thirteen from.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think it goes from about eleven to twelve thirty, so, or, I, I guess you grill and serve and. So, anyway, I'll send out an email that if anybody wants to help me on that day and then I'll let, I'll let them know that one or two of us is, I'm gonna do it anyway, so. I didn't even know that they did such a thing, so I'm, I'm happy to hear that they do that for some of their families that come in as just a little extra treat.
Yeah. Well, thank you for being willing to spend some time on me. All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion in a second to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. We are adjourned.